Plan meeting, with the exception of-
First item on the agenda is the roll call. Commissioner Rainey. Commissioner Lucas. Commissioner Burks. Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Present.
And I am present. We have a quorum. Second item is prayer and pledge. And Commissioner Lucas will be leading us in the prayer tonight. If you'll please stand and bow your heads.
Good Lord, we just thank you for this evening. God, we ask that you be with us during this time as we make decisions to better our community. Thank you for each person that's represented, each family that's represented here tonight. Be with us. Thank you for all your blessings on our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Third item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any additions to be made? Changes? Okay.
Mayor, one item. Under new business 12B and 12C, those can be combined into 12B. The ordinance I presented to you tonight will combine both of those. So you could actually delete 12C. And I apologize for the inconvenience.
Okay. Okay, if that's all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Item four is public hearing, and we have a few tonight. We're gonna start with A, item 11A.
Second and final reading of ordinance 2018-18. An ordinance to amend the City of Fairview zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map for tax map 46 parcel 87, consisting of 48-plus acres located at 2451 Fairview Boulevard from a RS40 low-density residential zoning district to a CG commercial general zoning district.
Okay. And if we have anybody that would like to speak on the matter, you may come up to the podium one at a time and state your name and address. Okay. If no one's here to speak on the matter, we'll go to 4B, item 11D.
Second and final reading of ordinance 2018-16. An ordinance establishing operational rules and guidelines for brush, materials, and debris to be processed by the city's chipper service.
Okay. Do we have anybody here to speak on the matter? Moving on to 4C, item 11F.
Second and final reading of ordinance 2018-12. An ordinance to repeal section 11-806 of the City of Fairview municipal code as written and to reserve section 11-806 of the Fairview municipal code.
Okay. And do we have anybody here to speak on this item? Okay. Then we will close the public hearing and move on to citizens' comments. Do we have any, Ms. Johnson?
Not tonight, ma'am.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, I just saw a gentleman on the front row raise his hand.
Oh, okay.
I've got a question about-
Please just join us at the podium.
Thomas Walker, 7214 Dogwood Drive, about 11A. What does general commercial, what can be done on that property?
Kristen, would you like to explain?
Commercial general is a, it's a pretty wide open list of commercial activities that are allowed. Anything from restaurants to shopping, retail, personal services, business services. It's our most wide-open commercial general business district, so to speak.
Okay.
But that would mean anything like restaurants and stuff? No industrial and no housing, or?
No, it wouldn't typically be a, it could, some commercial general could be, but what they're asking for doesn't include apartments or anything like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on. And we were to citizens' comments. And did we have any? Okay. Item six, awards and recognition. Okay. Item seven, public announcements. And then I guess it would be a good time to announce the comprehensive plan, the other meeting, which will be the 15th. Do you want to speak on that, Mr. Collins?
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission. As you're aware, we've been working in earnest for the last couple of months on the city's 2040 comprehensive plan. We expect to have that plan complete in the spring of 2019. We have the second of, I believe, four community involvement meetings. That's scheduled for this Monday, October 15th. It will be held at Camp Marymount, as the first meeting was. It will begin at 6:00 PM and run until 8:30. The planners are going to report back to us on the information they collected at the first meeting, assist us with some new information that helps us planning going forward, and gain some additional input from, from the information they provide us on that night.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we had a, had a request to announce Fall Fun Day at Bowie Nature Park. It's this Saturday, October 6th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Thank you. Did we get everything? Okay. Any other announcements? Okay, we'll move forward to staff comments. Do we have any staff comments tonight? Okay. Item nine, approval of the minutes, which they are under item 10, the consent agenda. If I can get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first and second. Any discussions or changes on the minutes? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Old Business A, second and final reading of ordinance 2018-18.
An ordinance to amend the City of Fairview zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map for tax map 46 parcel 87, consisting of 48-plus acres located at 2451 Fairview Boulevard from a RS40 low-density residential zoning district to a CG commercial general zoning district. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second.
Madam Mayor, I need to recuse myself from this matter.
Okay, do we have any discussions? I'll open up the floor. Any questions from the board members? Are you, are you a landowner? Because the time to speak on this matter was in the hearing. But if you, like, if you own the property, you can come up. That's the only reason I was asking. Go ahead, go ahead. I'll invite you up. It's not the common practice, but I hate to not let you ask a question.
Thank you. The address is on Cumberland Drive, 7209. And according to your map, the way it is, it's actually at the border end of the property. Is this gonna affect this property in any way? It's under estate because my mother has passed.
No, that property's not included. This is, if I'm answering the question right, it's not gonna affect anything on Cumberland and this, this particular one that we're talking about.
Thank you very much.
Anything else would have to come up themselves if somebody else had another zoning request. And we spent a lot of time at the last meeting talking about the buffer that already exists and with the, you know, just the shape of the property and the land. So even though that there's no commercial buyer, but there are a lot of things that, even though it surrounds residential, but there's a lot of characteristics of this property that are beneficial, that it's not gonna approach on the residential. Especially in the back. Not to say it wouldn't affect some.
Mayor, can I, can I ask a que, just, just to clear that up? So that people will feel a little better. So what's going to stop it from, I mean, there's no, do we have any rules that require a builder to leave that buffer?
No, but it would go in front of the planning commission and probably the characteristics of the property. It would have to be approved from it. And, and I recall, but please correct me if I'm wrong, but the density of the property was discussed at the last meeting. So that could affect it. What would be built and where? But, you know, we, we have no way of knowing until it goes in front of the planning commission. Any other questions?
I would like to say one more thing. I think that people in Fairview have become so accustomed to, you know, just kind of not participating in what goes on with these decisions. And I wanted to tell everyone that you have to stand up and speak up. Because we go on what the neighbors say and what we hear from people who live around that property. So I'm begging everyone from henceforth and evermore to stand up and speak up. Bring your neighborhood if you're against it. Because once we make that decision, it's because, you know, no one has really come to us and talked to us. And I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice too. So, but thank you.
And then Commissioner Rainey is right about this. We did spend some time at length talking about the property. And the city manager shared with us last meeting that this was gonna be in the growth area with the new comprehensive plan. So there was a lot of discussion. I also like to, and the reason I'm talking is just, I know not everybody was here or maybe tuned in, but there was a lot of discussion. And I know it's such a big piece of land that I just wanted to let everybody know that it, it was, it was discussed at length. And we don't take the decision lightly. It's just by the information that was given, we have to make the best decision. And obviously, if a landowner wants to come, anybody has the right to ask for their property to be rezoned. If there's no other discussions, we'll go into a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
And my vote's aye. Motion passes. You can join us, Mr. Burks. 11B, second and final reading of ordinance 18-14.
An ordinance renumbering certain sections of title 17 entitled refuse, garbage, and trash disposal of the City of Fairview municipal code. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussion? Okay. And Mr. Collins, can you just update for the citizens real quick?
Mayor, members of the commission specific to this, it's simply a renumbering. We're just creating space within the municipal code section 17.
Okay. Thank you. And no other discussion, we'll go to a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
And my vote's aye. Item C, second and final reading of ordinance 2018-15.
An ordinance amending City of Fairview municipal code section 17-101 entitled definitions to include paragraph eight defining brush and chipper waste. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Collins, real quick, if you'll update the citizens.
Yes, Mayor, what, what this does is establishes the definition of, as it states, of brush and chipper waste. We're in the process of revising that system. What we want to be able to do is notice anyone who may have excessive brush or chipper waste on their property or the proper way to remove it or dispose of it, or the length of time that it can be there, how, there. However, our current ordinance does not define brush and chipper waste. So we need to codify that, just in the effort of being able to make it known to whoever may be of interest, or that we may need a notice.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, no other discussion. We'll go to Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
And my vote's aye. Okay, that'll be 11D, right? Nope, 11E. No, it was D? Okay. Second and final reading of ordinance 2018-16.
An ordinance establishing operational rules and guidelines for brush, materials, and debris to be processed by the city's chipper service. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussion? Pretty much some of the same.
Yes, Mayor. What this does is establish, again, what can be chipped and specifically what cannot. We will not accept furniture, metals, debris, anything that's not deciduous-type materials that would be brought about from just a household trimming or maintenance.
Okay. Thank you. Vice, we'll go to a roll call vote. If no one has any other questions, Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
And my vote's aye. It carries. That brings us to 11E. Second and final reading of ordinance 2018-17.
An ordinance amending City of Fairview municipal code section 17-110 entitled violations to include brush and chipper waste. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Mr. Collins?
Yes, Mayor, what, what this ordinance does is establish a, a process for which the city can require a resident or someone else to remove items that are placed not in accordance with the collection system. As you're aware, we're working on establishing or actually finalizing the establishment of a collection system regarding zones, dates of the, days of the month, and the collections for those. What this does is allow us to employ a remedy where if someone puts their chipper waste, brush, debris, or other thing outside the collection area, we can request that they remove that. And if not, then they can be cited for the continuation of those items to be deposited on the city's right-of-way.
Okay. So, any other questions? Okay, Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
And my vote is aye. 11F, second and final reading of ordinance 2018-12.
An ordinance to repeal section 11-806 of the City of Fairview municipal code as written and to reserve section 11-806 of the Fairview municipal code. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. If you'll give us an update.
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission, as you may recall, this matter was brought about as a result of a discussion with the previous park board about some improvements to be made at the park. And one of the concerns were brought up were smoking, flames, other incendiaries within city properties. As a part of that, the concern about smoking generally was discussed in the park and at other city events, such as the Fourth of July, or Third of July event where we have, where it becomes an inconvenience or nuisance to our guests and participants. So what this does is simply ban smoking on all of those facilities and offer the city the ability to employ a fine based on someone's reluctance not to discontinue smoking on city property.
If we have no other questions or discussion, Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Mayor, I think maybe Mr. Collins just explained G.
Did he?
Yeah. F is just simply repealing a section of the code and reserving that section for future use.
You're correct.
Okay. So, just for, thank you for clarifying that. So, but we still have our first and second.
Right.
So, let's, if we don't have any questions, on F, we'll move forward. Okay. Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Aye.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
And Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
And my vote is aye. And that will bring us to 11G, second and final reading of ordinance 2018-13.
An ordinance to ban smoking on all property owned by the City of Fairview and within all assets, facilities, and structures owned by the City of Fairview, and to establish a fine for violations of the city's ban on smoking on city-owned properties and within city-owned assets. Move to approve.
Okay, we have a first and second. And as Mr. Collins just explained, is there any other questions? Okay, we'll go to a roll call. Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
And my vote is aye. Okay, that brings us to 12A, a resolution 32-18.
A resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the City of Fairview by owner consent and approving a plan of services, 7344 Taylor Road. Move to approve.
Okay, we have a first. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, or questions?
Kristen, is this the tract of land that's just across the street from the property that we talked about last meeting, I think?
It is.
Okay.
Can you give us any information on this? I mean, is that, I couldn't, the picture on the map, I couldn't see what y'all were trying to show.
It's a one-acre tract, a little, little under, that they are requesting annexation for the purpose of building a one-single-family house. They're not asking, there's no plan to rezone it in the, in the future. It's slated to come in as RS40, and the Water Authority has agreed to extend public sewer down to that property as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other discussion?
Is the property north of that city currently? Or is that county?
Immediately north on that side is in the county. The proper, all the properties to the west and north are in the city limits now.
Those, those five tracts that are immediately north are in the county. Once you get to that sixth tract that you can't really see, but the corner of, that's, that becomes city.
That's correct, yes.
So ideally, that's an area that would fill in over time. Because everything now on the other side of the road, up until that point, is, in fact, city property.
That's correct. And there has been some discussion, the, there's, there's two, two property owners basically that own the, the remaining tracts on the north. It's just that there was an urgency for this one tract for, for purposes of sale and building a house.
So how many acres total are between that property and where the city property starts again? Three, four, five, seven-ish?
Seven or eight.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, we'll go ahead and go for a vote. Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Aye.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
And my vote's aye. So, motion carries. 12B, ordinance 2018-19, park board.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussion? Okay. And this is the one that Mr. Collins said that we could add B and C. So should I say ordinance 2018-18, or 19, park board and tree board, or?
No, Mayor, it, 2018-19 encompasses, encompasses the entire, entirety of the action taking place. It's, it's reduced to one ordinance. So as we adopted the agenda, we just deleted item C.
Okay.
So there would be no 2018-20. 2018-19 would encompass all the changes.
Okay, and then new boards, park boards still?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, well, go ahead, yes.
Mayor, just for the citizens who weren't here during the workshop, just to let everybody know, this is just to clean up where we created the tree and landscape park board, superboard, whatever we want to call it.
Landscape and park.
Thank you, I can never remember the name. This just clarifies that all those duties fall to it now. Correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. The, the park board and the tree board were previously enacted by this board, or this body by ordinance. When we created the parks and landscape board, that was done by resolution, that's proper. But to change the duties from park and, park board and tree board to the park and landscape board, we have to dissolve officially the park and landscape board. In doing that, there's been a lot of work done for the operation of the park and the operation of the tree board, and we don't want to lose the work that was done, we just want to reassign the duties. So what this does is allow us to reassign the duties without affecting any other change to any of the work that was done in those processes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? We'll go to a roll call. Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Burks.
Aye.
And my vote is aye, so it carries. Then that brings us to item 13, manager, our city manager's items for discussion.
Mayor, just a few. First, just want to remind everyone that on Saturday, October 20, we'll have the movie in the park event. That will be at Bowie Park. It will, the movie will start at 6:30 PM. We will start the event a little earlier at 5:30 PM. The police department is gonna work the event. They'll have offer for sale, hot dogs, chips, drinks, that sort of thing. All the proceeds from those sales will go to the shop with a cop program. Again, the movie starts at 6:30. Those sales begin at 5:30. Beginning at 6:15, we'll have free popcorn available to the- Beginning at 6:15, we'll have free popcorn available to the participants out there who just want to kind of have a popcorn movie night and be able to do those things. So we very much look forward to that. That should be a fun event. Next, there has been some discussion about a forum or forum-type events for our municipal elections that are coming up. We have been able to schedule those. Those are going to be on two different dates. And as the, the forum was done last time, these two forums will be moderated by students from Fairview High School. It's intended to be forum and discussion, a question-and-answer type forum. It's not intended to be a debate. It's intended to be something that's beneficial to the community and to the voters who are looking to make their minds up for those positions. The BOC, or the Commission Seat Forum, will be Tuesday, October 23, at 6:30 PM. The mayoral forum will be one week later, Tuesday, October 30, at 6:30 PM. We expect those to take 60 to 90 minutes, but we hope they're heavily attended. Our students two years ago did an outstanding job during that event, and we expect nothing, nothing short of that for this, for these two events. So we'll get those announced, but we certainly look forward to having those. And lastly, having nothing to do with those operations of the city, but it was a little disheartening this week to see some of the, the media coverage, some of the activities, the commentary that taken place on Facebook and other social media sites regarding some, some activities by the city, lawsuits and other things. I don't do social media intentionally because of that. It can alter your way of thinking very quickly. And I, I get the impression there are groups or some, some people in the community who still see Fairview today as Fairview a couple of years ago, and that's just not the case. The Fairview of today, the Fairview that I've known since I've been here, is pretty progressive. I think we're pretty blessed to have an elected body, a group of elected officials who since I've been here have been focused on doing one thing, that's moving the city forward in a correct, progressive manner that benefits everyone who lives here and everyone who may live here. I'm not seeing anything different since I've been here. I don't anticipate that we would, but it, it's very, it's very encouraging to me to know the group that we have, know the effort that they put in when they're seen at the meetings and when they're not seen out in the community doing their work. It's, it's, it's very nice to be able to have that teamwork, and I don't think that's said enough, and I don't think it's seen enough, but it's certainly experienced enough by everyone we have here. I'm very privileged in the fact that I get to be employed full-time in a position that allows me to contribute to my community. And I don't know that I would take any group anywhere that has been more accommodating or more willing to step up and do what they think's best for their community in a positive, progressive way, as I said before. So as we move forward, I understand there are going to be negatives. I understand there are going to be criticisms. I'm willing to accept those criticisms on behalf of myself, the city, or anyone else, if they're earned. If they're not earned, I'm not so willing to accept those. And I don't believe that what we've experienced over the last couple of weeks is earned. I think if you look at the work that takes place at City Hall, if you look at the work that takes place with our staff, with our department heads, everyone else involved, is the exact opposite of what has been promulgated, promoted in the past. That's, that's my comment. I believe we're in the right direction. I believe we've proven that over the last two years, and I believe we'll continue to prove that. And I would challenge anyone else who has a question regarding that to come to these meetings, get involved, take a look at the work that's being done and the results, and I believe those will prove themselves, and that's all I have for you tonight.
Okay, thank you. I have just one question. On the forum, do you know why we're splitting it up? Is there?
There, there were two. One was in the interest of time. Obviously, we, we have five candidates there, but the seats are different as well. I'm sure that there'll be different questions for mayoral candidates than there would be for commission candidates. And it just seemed to make those specific to those things for the, for the opportunity for those candidates to be to express themselves fully with the, with the office that they're seeking.
Okay. Well, I just know in the past, they've done them separate, but on the same night for you didn't, you know, people didn't have to come to two different ones. So I was just curious if that was a city decision or the high school?
It was a city decision, but if we were going to try and do both on the same night, that's going to lead itself to a pretty late night. We were just trying to accommodate as much as we could, get participation and follow through, so that's how we arrived at that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, city attorney. Oh, good. Glad to hear it. Commissioner Rainey.
I would just like to say how glad I am that for the last two years since I've been on this board, we've had such great leadership with our city manager, our city attorney, and all of our staff here at the city. And that has really helped all of us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Lucas.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Burks.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Crutcher.
I don't have anything, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. I have two things that I would like to discuss. First of all, I want to go back to the, the comprehensive plan. These meetings and workshops are so important, and I was so impressed by the community and how many people came out. And so I'm hopeful that we will have the same kind of response in the next few meetings. I did say in the workshops, I do want to say it in public, I apologize. I did can't, we did cancel the meeting that week, so I made other obligations and plans. So I will miss this meeting, but I still hope everybody, you know, comes and we'll have a couple more, correct? And so just really encourage people to be involved with that. And then, as many of y'all know, we had, and I feel like we're talking about a lot of loss, or I am, but I have been in, in the city for quite some time and served in these capacity. So to lose another person that was a true servant is difficult. Mike Smith died of a sudden heart attack, and he was on the planning commission and served for years. And it was just an honor to work with Mike. They no longer live in Fairview, moved out several years ago. But for years, they raised their family in this community. He served with the Boy Scouts and different organizations. And like I said, he was a true servant, and an honor to serve with him. So praying for the boys and Cheryl, and just sorry for the loss. And if you could keep their family in prayers, I would appreciate that. And with that being said, if I can get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Got a first and second, and I take that aye because we said it at once. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you. Thanks to everybody for coming.